We're live.
Would you like to call the meeting order, or roll please Michelle?
Evan.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Genesio.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Here.
York.
Here.
Would you like to ask County Attorney Shannon Hoyer to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the draft meeting minutes from our last regular meeting, the twenty, or excuse me, the eleventh of June? Does anyone have any changes or corrections they'd like to bring forward at this time? During none, I'd look for a motion in a second.
Motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. None there. Carrie, Michelle, a couple communications, please.
The next conversation with the county will be held on Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty PM at the Nunde Town Hall, four Massachusetts Street, Nunde, New York, one four five one seven. Receive of notice of claim in the matter of Joseph Route versus Livingston County District Attorney Etta.
Thank you, Michelle. Abstract of claims next. Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Are there any questions or concerns on this abstract of claims? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted.
Do we have one resolution on the preferred agenda this afternoon?
Declaring surplus property Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion in a second to bring up a roll call. Roll.
Motion.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. None missed, Carrie. The roll on this resolution, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted.
Do we have a few resolutions that are going to require a separate roll call vote?
Mr. Demming, authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any discussions on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll call, please, yourself.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, Montrose Environmental Solutions, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions on this contract? Hearing none, the roll please yourself.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted. Mr. Naft, amending a portion of Resolution Number two thousand twenty-five two forty-two, two thousand twenty-five retirement recording.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted. Amending the two thousand twenty-five Livingston County Budget, Department of Health and Department of Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, Department of Health. There are three.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Is there any discuss, any discussion or questions on this transfer of funds? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number two thousand twenty-four three ninety-three, amending the two thousand twenty-four Livingston County Salary Schedule, Central Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for an employee compensation study, Evergreen Solutions LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-seven thirty-seven, absent thirteen seventeen, adopted.
Do we have one point minute for the discussion?
Chairman's appointment to the Livingston County Youth Board, Michael Dunn, representing, he's a youth designee, and the term is expedited.
Thank you, Michelle. David, do you have any updates for us this afternoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one. I'm pleased to notice, notify the board that Christine Studioso started employment this week as our, as our compliance officer. It's a newly created position for the county. Ms. Studioso is going to serve as a resource for all of our county departments as they navigate some of their increasingly complex regulatory requirements and compliance requirements. So we, we welcome her and thank you for your support of that position. That's all I have unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd like to now move forward into the recognition. Certainly a great pleasure to welcome everyone here to our twenty-eighth annual Employee Recognition. Certainly an honor and a pleasure for me to welcome employees who do such great work for the county. The employees were really the folks that face the county government. They're out interacting with our constituency, doing the, doing their work. And all that work makes us, the Board of Supervisors, look so wild. We appreciate, you know, everything you do. We have a great team here at Livingston County and really looking forward to recognizing our ten and twenty-five year employees here this afternoon and welcoming their families who have chosen to attend. David, do you have some open comments, please?
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this year's Employee Recognition event. Thank you for joining us to celebrate the members of our committed LibCo team who have been a part of our county for ten and twenty-five years this year. I want to extend a special welcome to the recipients of today's awards, as well as their friends, their families, and their colleagues. Today marks the twenty-eighth year of our Employee Recognition Ceremony. And on behalf of the team here at Livingston County, I just wanted to make a few acknowledgements to those who support this event each year. First, I want to thank Chairman The Fever and Board of Supervisors for not only continuing to celebrate and invest in our county's workforce, but for continuing their support as we build and sustain an environment where people are excited to come to work each day. And they want to spend their careers in public service right here in Livingston County. I also want to thank our Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, Michelle Reese. Michelle is the orchestrator of today's program, and she works diligently each year to help ensure its success. Thank you to our Center for Services Department for taking care of the setup for take-down of today's events, as well as all others that I may have missed who had a hand in today's preparation. Please join me in giving them all round of applause. So I'm told it's tradition here for the county administrators to remind you all of just how much more important it was to live back when our ten and twenty-five year employees first started. And I don't think anything would endear you more to you all being the new guy than to continue that tradition with this alarming fact. Those who are receiving their twenty-five year recognition, they didn't start working here this century. They didn't even start working here this millennia. Back when they started here, we were still prepared for the impending Y2K crisis. You may remember that this time, we all thought the sky was going to fall because we were abbreviating our dates to ninety-nine and thought we were going to all go back to nineteen hundred. Cell phones still had antennas. And what would any real slowdown memory link be without a mention that gas cost a dollar thirteen a gallon? And eggs were just ninety-six cents a dozen. So I'll let that sink in with our twenty-five year anniversary. Let's fast forward a bit to ten years ago, when those of you celebrating your tenth anniversary at work here started, it was twenty fourteen. Yes, twenty fourteen was ten years ago. Some interesting events were unfolding at that time on the world stage. West Africa was fighting through the Ebola outbreak, and the threats from the terrorist group ISIS dominated the new site. In sports, slow style events like skiing, snowboarding, terrain parks were included in the Winter Olympics for the first time ever. Also, for the first time in twenty fourteen, the number of people in the United States accessing the internet via their mobile devices surpassed those of us using our old desktop computers, leading, of course, to the world that we now know, where we all can access adorable cat videos twenty-four seven at our convenience. In Hollywood, the movies Interstellar and Grand Budapest Hotel were released, and the TV shows Gotham and Outlander debuted. The phrase gig economy entered the American lexicon for the first time. Gas averaged three dollars and sixty-seven cents per gallon. We got a little bit better there. Thanks for a dollar fifty a dozen just before we got hit with the bird flu crisis that same year. Locally, here in the county, we were recognized as the number one healthiest county in New York State for the second year in a row. Changes in the air for the Sheriff's Department. As the torch has passed, we shared Jack York to share Tom Doherty, who still leads that department today. The walls and records management were repainted, ushering in what we refer to as the Pepto pink color palette in Livingston County. The book Blue Devils in Vietnam was released, which was written by local veterans and edited by then Livingston County historian Amy Hall. And finally, the county unveiled a new website, which made it easier for our community to access our county government online. So let's get back to asking our twenty-five year employees and partying like it's nineteen ninety-nine. The euro was first introduced as brand new currency that year. Lance Armstrong rose to international prominence when he won the Tour de France. We all know nothing controversial would ever come from that. The nation was struck with tragedy at Columbine High School. Vladimir Putin became the acting president of Russia. And as you all know, Lil Nas X, Sabrina Carpenter, and Willie Rose's death were born. I'm not really sure who any of those people are, but they were all born that year. Hollywood blockbusters that year included Matrix, The Green Mile, and American Pie. At home, TV shows that day debuted included Family Guy, The West Wing, and SpongeBob SquarePants. I mean, what would the world be without SpongeBob SquarePants? New words in the dictionary included blog, K-pop, clickbait, and texturing. Locally, the data processing department at Livingston County became the Department of Information and Technology Services. David Allen retired from Central Services. The county clerk's office helped us to be the first county in the state to offer digital access to survey maps. And finally, the Livingston County Department of Health marked its thirtieth anniversary, and the county highway facility is being constructed over at the end of corners. That's all the nostalgia that I have for you this afternoon. Let's talk about our honored guests. While this is my first year as county administrator, it's not at all lost on me the incredible work and sacrifice that our honorees have invested to make this county thrive. They've adapted to a great amount of changes in the demands of public service. They have endured crises and celebrated shared success. They have missed life's milestones and worked long hours to help lift our community up. The men and women that we're honoring here today represent twelve of our county's departments. They've served with pride and integrity of seventeen towns, nine villages, and sixty-two thousand residents. They come from all walks of county government, including the Sheriff's Office, the Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Workforce Development, Highway, Central Services, Treasury, Emergency Medical Services, the Department of Health, Department of Social Services, the Office for the Agent, District Attorney, and County Clerk. They represent five hundred and seventy total years of service to our county. And more important than all that, they represent a commitment to service to self and the highest standards of good government. Your dedication and professionalism over the years have not gone unnoticed, and we are all deeply appreciative of your work. When I was watching last year's remarks by then Administrator Lou McCoy, I was dismayed to learn that he stole my thunder to quote Ted Roosevelt to close out his comments. That's my thing. I'm going to do it anyway because there's plenty of quotes heard from then-President Roosevelt, and he's very quotable. So I've got one here from his citizenship in a republic's views that was given in nineteen ten in Sorbonne, France, where President Roosevelt says, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out the strong man who stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done different. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strides behind him, who airs and comes up short again and again, because there is no effort without error or short time, but who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself for a worthy cause, and at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who in the worst, if he fails, at least knows he failed while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who knew neither victory nor defeat." The men and women that we are here to honor today are without a doubt in the arena. And from their many successes, we all continue to profit and grow as a county. I want to thank you all for your service and the board to your many years of success ahead. And with that, I'd like to turn things over to our Clerk of the Board to recognize our honorees. Thank you very much.
Okay, welcome, everyone. I give you some flattering faces. Some people I've worked with for twenty-five years, I don't recognize them until you introduce yourself. As I'm going to announce each name, if you could please come off the left side of the room. The Chairman and Vice Chairman and the County Administrator will be over there to present your gifts, and we'll get a quick picture. And then you'll come through a Department Head's proceeding line. So at this time, I'd like to call all of the county departments up to my left to form our seating line toward our... While they're all getting set up, when you take your picture, if you could make sure that your com logo is showing front and center that you come from. Ready? All right. First, to your presentation and to pointing out your award to your Department Head, County Treasurer Amy Davis. Okay, now for the ten year honors. For the Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Tina Gray and Toby Hookus. For Counties of Central Services, Derek Vanderwerken. Department of Social Services, Ashley Clark. Space Owen Woodman. For Emergency Medical Services, Rebecca Henry. Sorry, I'm going to keep the gas in order. Sorry. Going back to District Attorney talk, Brittany Cushing.
Can you imagine me being the chairman?
And for Emergency Medical Services, Robert Sparks. Samuel Tenali. Samuel Tenali. Mental Health, Jennifer Sweetley. Officer of Aging, Randy Bear. Sheriff's Office, Stephanie Loxton. Dan Cobal. Commissioner Samberg. Well, we have to watch. Karen York. Jason Yasov. For the Workforce Department, Sarah Jackson. And now for the presentation of the 25 year awards. Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Jennifer Holm. County Clerk's Office, Erica Lynn. Department of Health, Eric Anderson. Department of Social Services, Wendy Howell. Michelle Page. Christina Sturiger. For the Highway Department, Carol Loomincho. From Sheriff's Office, Diane Davis.
That's cool. He just wants to keep you on here.
Chance Baker. Stephanie Little. Patricia Rose. Emily Switzer. Emily Spencer. This concludes our awards presentation. The Vice Chairman, Greg Raffio, is going to say a few closing remarks.
This is one of three events that always surprise me. It's always good to have them. And the feeling that I have is powerful. They're out of focus. Some of them are here this 25 years. Some of them, some of them do something another. But first of all, she got the words. They matured, appreciate that from these people. Every constitution is important to them. They're the ones that see and let us face to face. I don't know. So, believe me, we truly, truly appreciate that. One of the things that I think I look back on in my time is that you have a career. When you start around them, when you see it yourself, what a honor it is to be there. And you know, my life through this job, this third time, I've thought about that. And I'm proud to see it here. And it's encountered, we've got people that make it clear. And it's nice to see. And it's always hard to find help. If you know you want to help. So, first on the list, I have to say, if you're looking to take it, you can meet your class and your partners. I'm a chair in the long vision, if you're taking it. And then you can vote, grab something you'd like to play. So, thank you to Congress, License, Superintendent, and also friends supporting you. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Chair now. Who should take over? Thank you, other than Osho, who's good. I'm going to go to the right now.
I'll select a bit.
All of them, very.
Aye, aye.
For each department, has one.